Good evening, everyone, and welcome to a special meeting at the City of Pearsall. To be held today is Tuesday, December 4th. The time is 7:03. And may I have a roll call, please?
Mary.
President?
Robert.
President.
Here.
Sonia Hernandez.
Here.
Brandon W.
Here.
We have the numbers.
Ben Rysko.
Here.
Galen.
Here.
We have a quorum, so let us stand. And for the invocation as well as pledge of allegiance. Galen.
Yes, ma'am. Please join me in prayer. Well, God, thank you so much for bringing us here tonight. Just thank you for all your blessings that you've bestowed upon us. And I just pray that you be with us this evening as we go through this workshop and through the items we have on the agenda tonight and help us to always make our decisions based on what you would have us to do, Lord, and keep you forefront in our mind, Lord. Just pray that you be with everyone here and bless those that work so hard for our community, Lord, in Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Item four, presentation by ACI Recycling Disposal.
Mayor and Council, how's everybody doing tonight?
Good. Good time.
We just wanted to come by and make a presentation tonight. We've done it many years past, a check for $5,000 for the children of Pearsall to support the Secret Santa or but the program that the city has to make sure that every child in Pearsall gets a Christmas toy. And I was thinking on my way up here, how much children mean to me now, I'm getting too old, and that they're a very important part of our lives, and we want to see every child wake up happy on Christmas morning. So, Mayor, here's a check for $5,000. And I can tell you how much the pleasure it is to...
Can you turn around?
I'm not holding it shut. I'm not holding up for that.
I took it back.
Okay, Robert, I can't see you. Okay, there you go. Mr. Hernandez, there you go. Now look at me. Did you get it? Not yet. Y'all looking at these more than I? Thank you. And now, three, two, one.
Thank you, Robert. How much are you reading? Blake.
Thanks, Speaker Calhoun. Unfortunately, no, I'm not one of those. I'm just a garbage man. But thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you, the employees here. We've got some great employees in Pearsall, and it's been a really great relationship. And a lot of thanks to the council because y'all have built a strong city here. And I know years past when I was with other companies, you know, you hear about Pearsall, "Oh, don't go down there." And y'all have changed the atmosphere to where it's just a wonderful place to do business in. Thank you. Merry Christmas to all of y'all. It's just so, Teak, tell everybody we're picking up harvest on Wednesday. After Christmas, we'll do Tuesday and Wednesday on that day, and Tuesday the same for New Year Day. So tell everybody to have it out, and thank y'all, and everybody have a Merry Christmas.
Blake, Blake, I just want to thank you guys. I don't know what time the trash truck comes by on your street, but they come about 5:00 p.m. on my street, and rain or shine or whatever. One particular fellow that's been there like 10 years, and he, and they run, they run to get the trash can. So it is a thankless job, and we'd be up a creek, literally, if they didn't do what they do. But anyway, great employees, they always wait.
He's a Pearsall resident. His name's Martini. And I wish that I had about 10 more like him. They guys 57 years old.
Wow.
He runs from house to house.
He does.
He comes two packs of sugar at a table. And I have seven helpers down here with him, and I would pull up, and the helper's right in the seat. I said, "What you doing up there?" Martini told me, "Get out of the way." Tremendous people, and I appreciate it. Thank y'all once again.
Awesome. All righty, moving on to 5A, new business. Discussion, possibly action to approve resolution number 2018-12-01, adopting a legislative agenda for the 86th session of the Texas Legislative. Action item, entertain a motion to discuss, please.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Frazier, second by Councilman Julian Hernandez, all in favor. Motion carries unanimously.
Mayor, Council, resolution 2018-12-01 is the resolution that formalized the bill that you guys drafted last year to establish the legislative priorities for the City of Pearsall in the 2019 session. When we send this forward to our elected first state senator, it needs to be in the form of a resolution. You guys formalized the priorities last time. This puts all the other stuff in there so we can get to them and get to work on questions. So if you have any questions, we have to answer your questions.
So.
Yes, sir.
So, Teak, when, as I recall, we were going to go up there and meet with them, too. Is that kind of...
Well, that's one of the things we talked about in the real county day or having a Pearsall day or the other. I know the mayor reached out to the senators to find out when that date was going to be. I haven't heard back yet, probably a date for it.
He didn't give me a date yet because they just, he's not sure.
But that'll be, start January or March?
March.
March. But that's still on the docket?
Absolutely. But this will just give up something that we can only, you know, pre-dropping bills, if we're going to do a bill related to you guys, number one, and number two, the hot tax being able to be spent on other items or being able to use a hot tax to fund the type B economic development work, you know, those will be bills that have to be passed. Those need to get up there before that. So this just tells them, these two big things we may look at the bills, the rest are the things we want you to oppose going forward. So this kind of gives an idea of what we're going to do. For the first two months that are up there, it's just social order anyways.
And this will go up to them now, so they'll have that.
So you got an option.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion of 5A that we adopt or approve resolution number 2018-12-01 for the legislative agenda for the 86th session of the Texas Legislative.
There is a motion, there is a motion on the table. May I have a second, please?
Second.
Call in favor. If I show up hands, motion carries unanimously. All righty, we're moving on to item 5B. Discussion and possible reconsideration resolution number 2018-11-01, designating an engineer service provided to complete application and project-related engineer services for the Texas Department of Agriculture, 2019 to 2020, Texas Community Development Block Grant Funding. Action item, entertain a motion to discuss, please.
Motion to discuss.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Motion carries.
Okay, Madam Mayor, Council, this is going to be an interesting one to vote. So at the previous meeting, we had decided on the agenda. There was some confusion in the vote, and at the end of this, we didn't know where we were at or what was, what to do with it. Prior to talking to the folks at CDPG, I went back and watched the video for me. That's part of the reason we take videos now. After I watched the video, I shared the video with Bobby, and we talked about the video quite a lot because we have a problem beyond what the next step is. I've got the video on here. If I need to show the video, we'll show the video. But the way the vote was done and the way the vote was redug when we asked for a count for the minutes, we have a charter violation in the way the vote was done. Because we had a vote, a passing vote, the mayor declared a vote, and then we had a vote that was changed when we asked for a show hand for those that voted the way they voted in the original vote. So we can go back and look at it if we need to. But where we stand right now, we had a vote that passed in the last meeting. So there's two things that there's, well, there's one thing only that can happen, two things that can happen. The vote can stand the way it was passed in the last meeting, or there could be a motion to reconsider that vote, which is why it's worded the way that it's worded on the agenda today. There could be a motion to reconsider that vote, and if that, if that motion passes, then the motion would be discussed again, and there could be an additional vote this time. By charter in section 315, 3 dot 15, 3 dot 15, under council rules, it says that the way that the meetings will be conducted will be established by the council, charter says it will be established by the council by ordinance. We have an ordinance that was passed in 1996, January 31st of 1996, that says that all of our meetings will be conducted following Robert's rules of order. So Bobby and I went through Robert's rules of order and went to it. Once a vote has been taken and passed, the only way that you can re-vote is for a town motion to reconsider. Motion to reconsider has to be made by somebody that voted on the prevailing side, and a second for that motion has to come from somebody that voted on the prevailing side. So you guys need to decide which one to do. I don't know what to do with it. We have phone calls from CDPG today asking for documents. They don't know if it's time to get it in or not, but we have a feral order to do tonight. So if you want to go through the vote, we have you show the video. So it's obviously clear this was a re-vote. And you called vote twice. And then when we ask for a show hand so we can put it in the minutes, then the vote is changed. And that can be done without a motion to reconsider, under our charter and the rules. So it's up to you guys which one to do. So as it stands right now, we have a motion that passed.
Okay, so...
If somebody wants to reconsider that motion, it has to be a motion from somebody on the prevailing side, and a second from somebody on the prevailing side to reconsider. That means they have to vote for it when you're involved.
Okay, so if nobody, nothing does, then the vote stands as it passed?
Correct.
Speak now, whoever hold your peace. So it stands?
Madam Mayor.
It stands.
I'd like to make a concession point.
It's already passed.
Okay.
There's a discussion to follow.
Okay, then we're moving on to six, council workshop. Item 6A, discussion regarding anticipated funds from executive, now executed, Steck pilot program. This is a workshop, so we need to entertain a motion to move into the workshop, please.
Motion to open the workshop.
On second?
Sir.
All in favor to go into workshop?
Work it.
Workshop, workshop, okay. The time is 7:16 for the workshop. Dear...
Okay, so where to start on this? So, I guess we got, so we were just in the budget process this year. We talked about the potential that we're going to end up with the pilot agreement that was still a reality, that we could end up being a pilot agreement in this year, not having to do the adoration and the money still available in the budget here. We had to have it through budget on October 1st, and we couldn't, and the process was going to pass on October 1st, so we didn't budget without any, any money back from the potential pilot agreement. As you guys, now you guys approved the pilot agreement, and it's done, so now that money is available in this budget year. We, in the pilot agreement, agreed that we would take the first payment on August 15th of this coming calendar year, so the money comes late in the fiscal year. But we do have $486,166,26 cents that we should get a check for on August 15th of this calendar year. That's during this mystery. Couple of things related to that. Steck, as we knew, we talked about this, we did the pilot agreement, they have sued the appraisal district over their appraised value. There will be an attorney from the appraisal district at the next, next week at the council meeting, going to talk to you guys in that council meeting about what the realities are in that lawsuit, what the potential is in that lawsuit. The evaluation of the facility was 66 million. After their energy credits, it was 58 million. That's the value that was used in our pilot agreement. They're claiming, Steck is claiming that the value of their property is 25. The appraisal district is claiming the value is 110 million. So there's a couple of interesting things here. According to what that attorney told us, you have to battle a lawsuit because you don't battle a lawsuit, then Steck gets the reduction to the 25 million mark. But without countersuing, you can't increase it. So after a lot of questions back and forth between me and him, what I did finally get him to state was if we win the lawsuit, that doesn't limit, if the appraisal district wins the lawsuit, it doesn't limit us to the 15 million. If the expert witnesses that would have to be paid for in this can show that that facility is worth 110 million, then next year the appraisal district could increase their tax value to 110 million, which is basically double our pay. So this is going to be an interesting scenario, but it's a two-year lawsuit, which means they're challenging the value this year, they'll challenge the value in 2019, and then in 2020, sometimes when that lawsuit is actually going to happen, when it actually get hurt, if it got hurt. At that point, if they won, we would have to refund two years of the difference. If they lost, then we wouldn't have to refund anything, and the next year you would see the increase in valuation, but without countersuing and costing another half a million dollars, you're not going to get up to the 110 until after the lawsuit's over. A number of these lawsuits have happened across the state with companies under, under, with big, major, things like that, oil companies who are suing the appraisal districts to get their value reduced. This gentleman has been part, the one that, the attorney that they hired, they hired because he's, he's done a number of them. He said he's done somewhere around 30 or 40 of them, I think was when he said, two of them actually got in court. He said, and every one of those, so what happens is, if the appraisal districts fight it, they make them invest all that money up to the point where the lawsuit's going to happen, and they know they're going to lose, and then they back out because they don't want a court to stamp that amount on their facility. You cannot countersue them under state law, you cannot, you cannot get attorney's fees back from them, but they can get attorney fees from you. That's the state law. So there's a bunch of little pitches and hiccups and all kinds of things that go in this. The interesting thing I thought, if you go look at the Steck website, they say the property's worth 110 million dollars on the website.
Did you do a screenshot?
Oh, yeah, they've already got screenshots all the way. So, I mean, to me, it's a pretty, to me, it's, to me, based on what we saw on that network, it's a pretty safe lawsuit. I don't think there's any way that the appraisal district's going to lose this lawsuit. One of the other concerns that I had was every year the appraisal district has set that amount, the taxable value, to something, and Steck has come in and argued it, and they reduce it every time, every time they reduce it, now some. So I asked the attorney, I said, "Is that going to hurt us in the lawsuit?" He said, "Absolutely not, because it's actually, it's going to be real value." So, and he, he said that he believes the facility's worth over 100 million dollars as well. So potentially, there's a chance for the city to see a significant increase out of that pilot agreement. Probably a better chance, three years down the road, of seeing an increase than there is of seeing us have to do it. That would be my, based on what I heard in that meeting, I think the appraisal district's going to be a pretty good shape. The appraisal district has some other issues that are going to have to be worked out. We'll talk about those in the next meeting, because the appraisal district, of course, is every taxing entity inside the district. And we have taxing entities inside the district that don't get money from Steck, that would have a large portion of the payment to make in the lawsuit, and they're not very happy about it. So that, there's some stuff that has to be worked out related to that as well. And we'll get, we'll get into all that next week with the attorney next week. So, but I want everybody to, we knew Steck had challenged their value, and they did that before we even started talking to them. I'm sure everybody understands that, so that's, that's a reality. That could pop up down the road, they can win. Stranger things have happened, but I don't think that's going to happen. So we have that limit. I mean, that's, that's something that's going to be sitting out there, staring at us for not only this budget cycle, but for next budget cycle as well, because they're going to challenge it again next year as well. So that's a thought, just to keep in the back of your mind. We do have enough in reserves left over from last year that we could fund whatever you guys want to fund, up to the 486,000 right now, and dedicate that check to go back into reserves to cover what got pulled out of reserve. So the money theoretically, the money's available right now, even though we don't have the check from Steck yet, we have the contract, they have to give us a check on that date. Lawsuit won't happen that fast, so we will get that check on August 15th. So we could, so we do have the money available right now to put to work right now and not have to wait. That was part of the reason we weren't afraid to give until August 15th to make the payment, because we knew we were going to have it available as soon as we got the agreement signed. In the following year, we'll get it, I think it's in March, and probably the same scenario because we'll reimburse reserves, and then we'll be able to pull out reserves and reimburse reserves again that year as well. So the cash flow component of it is, it's okay. We don't have a problem with cash flow. So basically, there's $486,000 that we will get on August 15th that you guys can choose to budget and expend any time you want. So that's what we're, that's, that's why we're here tonight, so you guys can give us some ideas of where you might want to do that, if you want to do that, one. Two, if you do, where you might want to do that, so that we can try to put together a budget amendment to bring to the next meeting, so that you guys can consider it the next week. Clear enough? Any questions?
Teak, just a couple of questions about Steck. And I understand that they would want to do this for up to each of the year, but they have a precedent already. Do you know, like, the last four or five years, that they've been at the 58 million dollar benchmark?
I do not know what that benchmark's been. I know every year they come in and ask for it to be reduced, and that's one of the, took the appraisal district, but every year they come in and challenge their valuation. And it's happened to me, like, the appraisal district each time gave a little bit because they didn't want to have to face a lawsuit. Because lawsuits happen when you battle a lawsuit, I mean, that's also the cost of defending. And so they were giving the vote each time, trying to not have to defend, trying to keep it up suing, and then now this time, they just, they finally said, "No, we're going to go ahead and file a lawsuit whenever we find out."
And they, this long before we did this?
Of course, everybody thinks it's our fault. Everybody thinks the reason they did it is because we annexed. Well, we didn't annex, one. Two, they told us the first time we talked to them, that they already filed a lawsuit, and it was filed a few months ago. So, yeah, it was not before we even talked to them. So, no thoughts. We're going to get away.
So, to be safe, you think we should just spend like, just like, like, half of 50% of that amount, or, I mean, just save at least the other half, just in case?
Well, so, so they're going to show, they're going to, the attorney next, next, next meeting is going to show you guys some numbers related to it, to what the potential, numbers are back and forth either way. They showed to us at the appraisal district meeting, they asked if they'd not be made public because they don't want Steck to see what everybody's talking, what the actual costs are going to be to each entity, that kind of stuff. So we'll, we'll talk about those. He'll talk to you guys in executive session at the next meeting, so you can see the real numbers. What, you know, we have 600, a little over 600,000 sitting in reserves, you know, so theoretically, as long as everything goes good this year, we should build up reserves a little bit more. So we should have enough to cover if we have to. You know, if we went, if we went ahead and expended it both years, but we had to refund some, you'd have enough, we should have enough reserves to do that. We have enough reserves, the number he gave us, that's a potential reimbursement, we have enough reserves right now to cover two years of that repayment. So we would have enough right now to cover, or, yeah, so we, yeah, we would have enough to cover, expending the full amount. And one other thing to remember on this, too, you know, one, one thing that's kind of important to remember this, as a facility, they get depreciation credit, so their value does go down a little bit every year because the equipment is old. It's just like anything else, your car, the value goes down every year because it gets a year older and a few more miles on it, right? So their facility, the same thing happens. So this first year, the valuation, we got taxed almost 58, we got our portion almost 58 million. So let's say that, that this whole thing just got dropped, and they never increased their value or whatever, the next year, that, that valuation has to include that depreciation, so each year our payment from them will get a little bit smaller because values will go down a little bit each year, too. So we're not going to get $486,000 every year. You know, 46 this year, next year, maybe 470, maybe 465, depending on what their depreciation factor is on their facility. Three years from now, maybe 100, and maybe, you know, maybe almost 100, almost a million, too, depending on what the value, if the value goes up. But we know, notwithstanding that lawsuit, it would go down a little bit every year, probably 2%, 3% is what it's going to go down every year because of depreciation. So keep that in mind as well, as, you know, this is, this is the most perfect world, though lawsuit right now, this is the biggest payment we would ever get from, it would get smaller every year.
Unless they build it.
Unless they add more, and then, of course, then we see more, we see more, they start adding more, more facilities, too. But that's not a guarantee, but the depreciation is a guarantee. We know that that 486 is going to get a little bit smaller every year.
You know, Madam Mayor, you know, Robert, taking that a step forward, we really believe we're going to continue on that, even taking out the Steck proceeds, that our utilities partner is going to continue to grow and right, and we think we'll have reserve. What about if we get budget time next year, we just allocate a line item, 250,000, and just in that reserve, because that reserves could even grow that way if it does come, we've got it.
Well, it's even easier than that, than what you, what you could do in the budget next year, just do a restricted reserve fund. That's more that, and that's, and that's only, that's all it could be used for until that lawsuit's over. A lot, what a lot, what a lot of cities will do is they'll put that in escrow. I mean, they basically, they set up an escrow account, you know, if there's a potential refund, they'll set up an escrow account, do it that way, too. But you guys can do, you guys can do a restricted reserve fund at any time, and that, until that lawsuit's over, that restricted reserve could not be touched until that was all cleared. That's a possibility, too. And you could do that with part of the reserves you have right now. I mean, you know, you could do that with part of that, I mean, you got reserves right now, you could do that one, too, as well. Now, we don't have enough in reserves to cover all this, and if you, if you're talking quarter million plus 400, that's something, that's over 700,000.
Right. It'd just be the difference, which is roughly 250,000, roughly.
You can't do that. That's the same thing we talked about doing on the gas project. That's the reason, it's a restricted reserve fund, it's just for that purpose to cover, to cover that, that's what we're working with, with, we need gas right now, trying to get that repayment back. It's a restricted reserve. Gut feeling that we're safe, my gut feeling is we're safe on this. I mean, I really think, you look at that facility out there, it's not a 25 million dollar target facility. Now, there's something else, I, so their argument now, okay, I want to make sure you understand this, too, their argument is, part of their argument is, is that it's not just the value of the facility, it's that when they build the facility, they were expecting to sell electricity at 30 cents per unit, and their cost was 10 cents per unit, and they were going to have a margin of 20 cents per unit that they sold. And instead, now they're selling at, at 9 cents a unit, and their margin, and their cost is 3 cents a unit, and their margin's only 6. So they're wanting that, that, that reduced margin to be taken off the value of the product. Yeah, good work there. And that's a big part of their argument, and it's a hard argument for them to make because it's a peak facility. They only sell during peak time, so they're not selling when it's a 3 cents a, you know, whatever, 3 cents a unit's not the right number, but they're not selling when it's a 3 cents a unit. And it's like you said, sometimes they're selling at 900 cents a unit, you know, they're selling at those huge peak times. And so that argument really doesn't work for them. But I, I really think, a lot of that lawsuit, I think they thought that the people here didn't, wouldn't have enough money to fight it, they were just going to back off because the appraisal district's been backing off every year. And I think they thought they were just going to be a big bully and come in here and push everybody around, and everybody's just going to back up. And someone goes back up.
The precedent's got to be set at that figure. It's got to be 660 million or so, and so it does seem like a fight that they are probably not going to win, especially if someone's got a picture of it, "We think this is worth 110 million dollars."
And if they're going to claim, you know, tax value, you know, their taxes, their value, but, you know, yeah. But that's, and that's why these cities get so expensive. I mean, I don't know if any of you guys have ever been involved in the lawsuit of this thing. This is very similar to, like, the lawsuit against the federal government. You start having to bring in those expert witnesses, they get to expand, and, and on this, I mean, you know, in the industry, they're going to have the best people in the industry, they're going to be coming, coming in and telling that judge, "This is why it's only worth 25 million." And so you got to go get that other side that can come in and actually handle them in that courtroom and show where they're wrong, and the expert witnesses get, terribly expensive. But the good thing about it is, at the end, you know, if we get right up to that day But the good thing about it is, at the end, you know, if we get right up to that day and they drop the lawsuit, and that's it. We've got all that expert testimony and all that stuff put together showing that that facility's worth a hundred and ten million, or ninety million, or whatever they come up with. Showing that it's worth way more than what it's been appraised on, and the next year the appraisal district just lobs that up, and if they turn around soon again, you already got expert testimony now. So with that, you know, they're, they're putting themselves in a pretty precarious spot on this as well, because if they lose, it's gonna cost them. A lot. Depending that we get worth of third, fourth, I think we're number four on this for the amount of money that we get from them. There's three entities that get more money than we do. And so it's, I mean, that setup, that one of those entities gets a lot more than we do. Actually, two of those entities get a lot more than we do. Um, so that's a big increase for them. And if we're going from four hundred eighty to eight hundred and something, those others are getting seven figures. So that's a, there's a lot of, there's potential for a big, big swing for them on this lawsuit, so I think they probably Any other questions on just what we talked about? Okay, so I'm, so, we didn't really know what to start with, to give you guys for the night. Uh, but we just kinda went back through what we talked about there in the budget process, and tried to put together some stuff for you to look at, just as thought process. Um, we have, above the board, one of the things that was mentioned was hiring additional staff. Uh, so we have a staff, we have one line item, each line item up there is, is for each department. It's what it would cost for one person in each department. Um, nothing in particular in any order or anything else, it was just, if you wanted to hire, and I think you have, you can put the sheet up there. You guys have this sheet up there as well, the A by ten sheet, if you wanna hire one street maintenance worker, it tells you what the total's gonna be. If you wanna hire one park maintenance worker, it tells you what the total's gonna be. If you wanna hire a utility clerk, it tells you what it's gonna be. I mean, everything right there, it tells you what they're gonna cost. Um, remembering that this money goes to the general fund, but you guys also approved in the budget a transfer from utilities to the general fund this year. So if you wanted to add other employees in the utility fund, then the budget amendment would reduce the transfer to leave additional money in there to cover them, and part of them will recover the transfer, if that makes sense. So you could add, so there's, there's a whole list there of what, what it would cost. You know, you could say you wanted to add two more workers in streets, one more here, we could figure out what it's gonna cost, pretty simple. Uh, so that's why I have Joseph put the sheet together, so we can see for any, any combination of employees you guys came up with, or, or departments or whatever, we can see what that would cost. Uh, so we have that. I did not print out the sheet. One of the other things that was talked about during the budget process was if this went through looking at adjusting the hourly employees up higher in their salaries. I didn't print that out. We know what that's gonna cost, but I didn't print it out, because we have a bunch of those copies that I've got to find around anyway. But I do have, they're on the board, you wanna look at it, they're on the board. Uh, one of the other things that had been talked about, the only other thing I can remember that had been talked about was putting some additional money into repairing streets, into hiring a company or hiring somebody to repair streets.
C D L driver.
Well, that, no, we didn't, did you put a C D L driver on there? Okay, there's not a C D L driver on there. That was another one that we talked about, because that definitely wasn't one. But we can figure out what that costs pretty quick. It's on the sheet, I can find out pretty quick. Um, so that would just be a dollar amount. I mean, you can just call it a dollar amount on the street thing, that's not that big a deal. Uh, let's say, what would be X amount, or you could say, okay, we have four hundred eighty-six thousand, we wanna do a quarter, you wanna, we wanna increase the hourly employees, we wanna hire five more employees in these departments, and we wanna put the rest out in the streets. I mean, whatever combination you guys come up with, it doesn't, we just, but we, there was no way for us to really put anything together because we didn't know which direction you guys wanted to go in. So I think that's what we're kinda looking at tonight, is what direction is the majority of the council looking at, and then we can try to get something put together.
I have a question. Could, could we allocate some for, for the, the streets, like buying like, like a small maintainer, you know, instead of raining, or leasing a maintainer? That, I mean, I mean, you know, to start, street by street, you know, like what y'all did, I mean, that's awesome. I mean, if, if we can continue doing street by street, you know, I mean, you know, you know, would that, would we be able to do something like that? If we can find, you know, sign a lease agreement with, for maybe a small maintainer, or?
So, so, so do you like what we did on the bond? We have to get three pieces of equipment. I mean, we have to rent three pieces of equipment to do, the laydown machine. Okay, you have to, and you have to have the compactor, and you have to have the maintainer. Uh, the maintainer out of those three is the most important, because we can use that to do the alleys and all the other stuff. So the maintainer's really the most important piece of equipment of those three. Renting the rollers, not horribly expensive, the, the laydown machines are, it's, one, it's too much to buy, and two, they're, they're expensive to rent. Um, and for, for, that would be the one that we probably would not, we wouldn't wanna buy that one. Uh, we, if we were to do something, we'd rent that one, because that's a lot of money sitting around when you're not using it. Um, and of course, the third piece, the last piece, it comes with a zipper, and we have a zipper. Uh, it's, we're rolling on that project, we've just not got it fixed. It's about, it's about backup and service. Uh, we had looked at, uh, last year, we brought a potential purchase contract on the maintainer, a three-year purchase. Uh, we could do something like that as well, where we're designating that, you know, X amount. You know, one of the things that we, I don't know if you guys remember, but in the budget process, we had a line item for equipment in the utility budget, but we had to pull it when we didn't have the money from the annexations. Um, so, but next year, that would be back, that would be back in there. Um, so, you know, you could do a fifty thousand dollar line item a year. I think when we looked at that maintainer, it was like one forty, one forty-two or something like that. It's a government capital, the interest rates next to nothing. And the payment was like forty-eight thousand a year or so. It was less than fifty, when we looked at that payment on that. Uh, that, we tried to lump, because we were, we were buying the, the backhoe for the wastewater treatment plant, and we were gonna lump it together with that, and that kinda, that gave us a little bit different deal on that, but we could probably still, while, like, the thing with the maintainer for us, is that the maintainer we used on bond was a ten-foot. Um, and that's the smallest one you can get. But the reason that we got that ten-foot is because we still have it, and we're hitting alleys and stuff now too. When we can, when we have somebody to put on it, where they're not sick or here, we're, we're, we actually got, when we finished with it, they gave it to us for an extra month for one week's rent. So we kept it, that's how we fixed the dirt around the skate park. Uh, Joe's been on it in there, getting all that leveled out, so we don't have those big holes over there, getting that cleaned up. And then it's going into the alleys, and those that are messed right now, they're trying to get that cleaned up as well. Uh, but yeah, a ten-foot maintainer, buy a piece of equipment, sure. I mean, any, any, any piece of equipment that we buy's gonna help. Uh, that maintainer, especially for the alleys and stuff, it makes a big difference, being able to scrape the sides of the streets, you know, we've done, we've done a lot with that maintainer since we had it. So yeah, that's something else to be looking at too, you bet.
And the cost?
Hundred and forty.
About a hundred and forty, but I would, I would suggest that we do it, that we finance it.
Finance it?
Well, if we did, look, just looking at this, you know, depending upon the totals, you know, thirty-seven thousand is probably the average, and it's, you know, seven, seven employees would probably be about, uh, times, um, about quarter of a million. You know, and I, I don't know, I'm just, I'm just thinking, you know, how to get the most bang for the buck and get the biggest workforce out there, do more stuff done. You know, allocate a little bit for equipment, a little bit for employees, and then the rest for road, road repair. You know, um, and, and I don't know, I'm just, just, just thinking, so if it's up to four hundred eighty-six thousand, two hundred forty-six minus two fifty equals two thirty-six minus fifty. So that'd be a hundred eighty-six thousand for roads. It didn't have to be like, it would be two hundred thousand employees and, you know, and that would have fifty thousand of that. We'd maybe be two hundred thousand employees and two hundred fifty thousand of road repair. You know, how, how much roads can we get done?
And we've, we've done, uh, so let's see, we did a hundred thousand out of the bond, um, we did
And how, how much would that do us probably altogether?
Intersection, we've done four thousand yards of, of asphalt intersections already. Uh, we've put down a ton of asphalt, we've, we've put out a lot of asphalt already. Um, you know, one of the other, so because there was so much, um, questioning about it last year, um, we already got into our, our road money for this year. We've done a bunch of work out of the road money for this year too, trying to keep this money. Um, and I probably should've done that, because we haven't had revenue yet. Um, but, um, we explained it a bunch of times last year, and the question's still getting caught up, so just, we'll do the road, draw it off back if we don't. Uh, then we also cut back on operating expenses, we'll cut back on operating expenses later in the year. So we've done a hundred thousand, it was in the bond, we did the fifty thousand we had left over in the budget last year when we had revenues. Um, we've done fifty thousand out of the budget for this year so far. So we've done about two hundred thousand in the last two months, probably. Um, so, you know, we've done thirty-nine intersections, I think. Uh, of course, I've done who will, because Willow was on the old street project, we did bond. Um, we've done some other minor repairs in a couple other places too, on some of the other roads. So we've done, we've, we've done a truckload. Um, making repairs is one thing, trying to do a whole street's another. Uh, that's where your cost really goes up. You know, if you're taking out a section and doing small sections, you can get smaller companies to come in and do them, they're cheaper. Uh, you start trying to do a whole road, I mean, you gotta get the people have the equipment and have the, you know, the stuff to do it. Um, so, you know, if you said two hundred, two hundred thousand wanna do roads, we'll probably get one road, you know, we might get one. Uh, and that would be a far greater one than doing the water and sewer and everything underneath it before we did it, so most of the building, we're doing this construction too. Uh, but, but repairing big houses where we got messes like what we had on, on bond, uh, you know, those intersections out there, we need to do something like that, it probably stretches out the way. I got bond, those ended, we did three, when we did those intersections bigger, because those were all those trucks, apparently, that have mostly earned it up, we don't, we don't show pictures, last night those trucks, probably no road over there. Um, we had three extended intersections there, and then that big chunk of that, I think, I think it cost us forty, like forty-six thousand, I think, somewhere around that.
And it's, it's like three hundred yards, four hundred yards, or longer than that?
Probably four, I think probably pretty close to four. Um, you know, we put a little bit extra, we put a little bit extra asphalt in that street, uh, because that's a street that a couple of those drivers that came in here that tell us that they never drive their truck all loaded, and they're loaded every day, that's the street they live on. Try to make it last a little bit longer, it's usually gonna get torn up, those intersections get torn up, they get broken away. Um, but, you know, we tried to put a little bit extra there to make it last a little bit longer, um, because they're not, because they're not broken into. Um, you know, um, we've still got, we looked at, if you go, well, we're gonna try to get this one, and those two, if you go on Ash here, right past the post office, I mean, those two blocks right there, past the post office, there's hardly any road left. Um, I think that's the next one we're trying to get put together right now, to try to figure out how to do it. Um, there's a block and a half right there, I think, and then we can turn down in front of, we're a little by the church. Or that would be, you could, you could, you could ride a pole or something like that. Um, you know, it is that, so we're, we're trying to figure
Did you call it out?
No, it's not called out, Colorado's on ours. It's like Colorado's next time. So the other side, Colorado's ours.
Right, behind the post office, they go by
You're actually at the post office on Ash, to that next main intersection, whichever one it is, maybe it's Brussels.
Brussels.
Yes, oh yeah.
Uh, so we're gonna, we're gonna work on that one next, um, Chaparral and Roosevelt, and that corner out there.
Right.
All, so, found the filler for it this week, uh, where we finished, you know, the, taking out the mine pyramid in Patina Park.
Say that again?
We found the filler for that one. Uh, we took out that old concrete pyramid that was in Patina Park, we had to bust it out, because that's where those flashbacks were. And we hauled two truckloads and busted up concrete out there, we'll fill out that. Uh, 'cause that's the one, once we get it done, they broke it up into little mini pieces, and once we roll that, that'll contract real good. Uh, so we've got, 'cause that thing's sloped off, and that's why that thing stays caught up so bad. Uh, so I think we have that material to fill that in now, try to get that corner, I'll get that corner worked up. Uh, so that's what we're still looking at, kind of, to get done here pretty quick.
Madam Mayor? What about our drainage?
Um, Councilman Pauli, Pauli Alves says, you were next.
Oh, yeah, I, I was gonna ask, um, so we, you said we are using monies that are not available to us for streets right now. We were gonna use the reserve that we left over from last year, that's what we talked about.
Reserves are left on our last year budget. Like they're saying, reserve came, they're not, they're not their budget. Um, if we wait, it's like we talked about last year, if we wait until we make our revenues, we don't have money to work on streets until July, August, September, before we get them. Uh, so instead of doing some of that other stuff up front at the start of the year, we do have revenues for, and of course, you know. Um, but we got, I think we got our first check for one point four million for taxes, so the money's there, but that's one point four of our total budget for the year. And so we go, you gotta pay, you gotta pay like a bill every month, you gotta pay employees every month, you gotta pay those
I understand that, but, so when we were told that reserves from last year's leftover money were gonna be used for this year's streets, uh, we're not doing that.
They never talked about that. I can't, I can't designate reserve money to be spent on streets, you guys do that. I can't, I can't just spend that money without a budget. You guys talked about spending, about using drivers for streets, but there was never a vote to do it. And I can't, I can't spend that money without authorization from the council spending. That's the city then. So we have a safety net.
So we can spend it then?
Well, if you spend it, then you can't spend the Steck money, because that's how you cover the Steck money right now.
Oh, okay.
So if you spend the reserve money now, you cannot spend the Steck money because we don't have it.
So one of the other?
Or the
Yes, yes, so we need the reserve
Is there restricted reserve?
Yeah, we don't really have real money for the Steck yet.
Right.
We're, we're spending the reserve in lieu of what's to come.
Yeah. So that way you're not spending the reserves, that way you're keeping those reserves, and you have something in case there's a burden coming. Because you know you're gonna put it back when you get a section.
With the thought about it, budget time, the restricted reserve in case the suit come, we, we can still, that's what we're talking about, is how to allocate the four hundred eighty-six thousand. We can allocate a certain part of it to roads.
Correct.
So, so all this, really, why, why even do this at this point? I mean, if we don't have the, the funding?
Well, you do, if you, if you borrow against your reserves, if you borrow against your reserves. If you know that on August fifteenth, you're gonna get four hundred eighty-six thousand dollars.
And there's goods.
And so go reserve next year, because you don't have time to spend it before the end of the year.
Oh, okay.
So we already use the reserves, we're just gonna pay it back, you're better.
You're, you're part of yourself interest-free, first time you're also an interest-free loaner.
Did you get that brown? Well, I think what we talked about, uh, we talked about, uh, maintenance, street maintenance workers, is we try to get lots of those streets drivable, potholes and all that.
That is my idea.
So one of the things that I think would definitely be a good idea, we need another C D L project, because we have two C D L pieces of equipment and one C D L offer. Um, so that's definitely one that I think you guys should, should wanna get.
Okay.
Um, so we can get somebody on that street soon for full time.
Yeah, we all talked about the patrol officer and the cook compliance as well. Do you guys wanna kinda set some parameters on the four eighty-six, what the, what the school? Well, I think the issue out here in the union, I mean, as, as we hear it, you know, people want
Streets.
Streets, don't have as many potholes, and we'd just need more people and more material to get it coming.
Well, in thought of that, one of the big compliances over there on the west side where we've got the drainage issue, what, could we use some of this to get started on our drainage project over there, clearing and putting down that concrete?
That's already done.
Are you talking about?
Yeah. That's up, that's up. If the goal is to fix as much as we can, as fast as we can, I would suggest that we allocate money to repairs and not to a street employee for this year, because that thirty-something thousand dollars fixes a lot of potholes real quick, where you can go through in there and fix them, like that.
Who's gonna do it if we don't have the
We have to have a C D L driver. No, 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 C D L is for that sweep.
Who's gonna, who's gonna fix the potholes if we don't have enough people to do it, like
Hire a contractor. Hire a contractor.
Same like we did.
Just like we've been doing, on the intersections.
Same like we did with, with the
And is that gonna cost more?
Yeah, there's a Well, you're not paying benefits, you're not paying all the, you're not paying all that stuff too, but you can get the year's worth of work done in two weeks, or three weeks. I mean, you don't have to, you can break it up crew, and tell them, we've got a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars, start right here, start fixing potholes, and, you know, you're, and you're gonna fix them at seven dollars a pothole, whatever the number comes out to. Start here and go, and just give them up, and you get a lot more work done real quick.
They've hired maintenance workers, street maintenance workers, they could be here for the next round of potholes.
You're correct. And then so we hire street maintenance workers, we got two guys on the pothole patch, and that was what that machine takes. So that third person, what, what equipment are they gonna use?
Well, we need one, just one more, right?
Well, if you got, if you get three more people, what equipment are they gonna use? I mean, the, the more people you get, the more confidence you're gonna get with not having the equipment. We need an operator for the backhoe, uh, we have an operator for the backhoe for the, the
Maintainer?
Maintainer, we have a maintainer. Um, you know, we've got somebody that can operate that. Um, you know, so, you know, a lot of the city, I mean, a lot of the cities have got to where they're not, they're, they're contracting out all of the street repairs. Because it's more efficient, it's quicker, you can get them done at the best times of the year, uh, when, when, uh, when the temperatures are right, everything seals up right, you do it all right. And then it's, it's a thought that that might be the, to get a lot done quick, um, you know, we can't hire enough people to get a lot done quick. We can, we can plug away out there, we can't hire enough people to get a lot done quick, so.
I, I think you're absolutely correct, because I, I think it's way beyond, well, you're two employees to hire at this point, because there's so much potholes everywhere that, you know, it's virtually impossible. It'll take years and years before we get them all, and then we have a heavy rain, we start all over again. You know, so I, I, I think the best bet is to hire contractors and come and get them all done as soon as possible. Now, do we have to go off the bid for this, or, or, what, what is the threshold for, for going off the bids, or?
Well, I mean, threshold's fifty thousand. Um, so if we did it in projects, we probably could do it without going off a bid. Um, you start with a bunch of projects together, but at forty-nine thousand, nine ninety-five, you get dropped. So you don't need to, probably would be better, you know, it depends on what number we come up with, that's gonna be that number. Um, you know, if it's, if it's, we're gonna do a hundred thousand dollars worth of work, maybe we do do two projects. Uh, you know, we do one that's, that's, um, that's, one that's potholes and one that's utility cuts, bad utility cuts or something, you know, whatever. Um, if it's two hundred fifty thousand dollars, we need
So do you, do you think we can hire a mom-and-pop operation that, I mean, you know?
Yep, that's what we did on the intersections, and it worked. Those intersections carried out good. You know, we saw a cut, you know, we had a couple, you know, we talked about a couple of them where, right, you know, why worry about cut? As soon as we got the intersection done, it started crumbling right past it, and then, you know, that stuff that we could fix with a pothole patcher. But the, the worst stuff we got, you know, the worst stuff we got, that was a mom-and-pop operation that came in and did that. That was a small, small operation.
The only other problem that I did see was, we needed, we needed to list at least a little bit more grade on it, you know, because now it's, it's actually, it's
Everyone is sipping.
The one that was small, I thought we fixed it. There was one of those, well, it went back in there, and I thought it, back in that, or did something fixing. I'll, I'll, yeah.
Well, guys, I, I, we've got a great idea here, and it, it looks like the trunk here is, is, is equipment, roads, and staff. And so the, the key would be here is, is, is equipment, roads and staff. And so, the, the key would be what, what our pleasure is, is, in splitting it in one area.
Roads.
You know, how the street was?
Streets, streets.
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 Streets, equipment and then plate.
And what? You throw up some numbers.
Oh, you say a bunch.
Yeah.
What was the estimate on a CDL driver?
Street, street and a CDL, of course. I think that's the-
Yeah, we put a bunch of the government together that had a fifty-thousand dollar line item in it for equipment purchase. Does anybody have a partner on that?
I don't think- It's fifty thousand a year.
Yeah, for, for, for a lease purchase on it.
Yes.
Anybody have a partner on that?
I think they also, if you look at what a contractor might come in and do.
It was that one. Chris was the one that said central metro, something.
It's a little.
Yeah, and then go to the tab on the bottom that says hourly, wages hourly or something like that.
City summary.
Go right, go right, wage summary, dump that one, you can very easily part of it. And then look for the CDL or whatever. And it will come up, it'll say, it'll come up as CDL, it says something else. Go down. Here it was.
Everybody knows.
No.
Most smart.
Go back.
Street maintenance.
It was a pretty long period.
Yeah.
So, go, go over to the eighty percent, see what that number is.
Eighty. Twenty-seven, that's one?
Okay, if I remember right, the CDL operator was about thirty.
If you're ninety, it's thirty-one thousand ten. If it's eighty-
If it's eighty, I'm saying it's eighty.
It's twenty-seven thousand five and a half.
Okay, twenty-seven, five what?
Twelve six.
Okay, plus benefits. So, it's, it's about thirty, somewhere around thirty. When you have the retirement insurance in for another CDL operator.
Eighty-five percent.
There's two equipment operators, it was a seven.
There's a city mechanic, equipment operator, ground suite supervisor.
Well, the blind swan line, which is a little equipment operator, must do summer and winter, sorry.
The same.
Okay, correct.
Yeah.
Well, they're looking for that. You guys got an idea about where to run much of the road, you know, which are staff? But it's, I mean, we have to find out what the contractor might be able to do for us and what costs and things like that, I think.
Well, I mean, we, we can just tell them, we got this much money, you know, how much are you going to charge us per yard? You know, we, we would get the bid on a per yard basis or a, I mean, they're going to talk about per cut per yard because if it's, you know, if it's a one-foot pothole, they got to cut out versus a four-foot pothole, you know, the cuts are going to be, you still got to make, you still got to make the cuts. So.
We should allocate us that amount.
Yeah. I, I think, I think the best thing to do is call them out and just tell them, this is what we want, this is what we're going to pay you per yard that you do. We'll bid it on a per yard repair, per, per yard of repair.
So, how much are we talking about? We're looking at four-hundred-and-eighty-six-thousand.
We've got four-hundred-and-eighty-six-thousand total. So, you've got four-hundred-and-thirty-six-thousand out for the fifty thousand.
He did a two-figure, fifty thousand in roads and a CDL driver.
An estimate of about thirty for a CDL driver?
About thirty, so, so if we do it, choose a CDL driver, that loses a four hundred, just say four hundred right now, until we get it all figured out. Because if it's four hundred and four, then we'll put the other three on roads and lanes.
Well, two, two, didn't, I mean, didn't we talk about more staffing is kind of hard? I mean, if we said, okay, we'll spend a hundred and fifty on staffing, then that leaves, that leaves like two-hundred-and-eighty-thousand left in roads.
If there's four-hundred-thousand left and you did a hundred and fifty to staff, that would be two-hundred-and-fifty for roads.
And we could get out with a hundred and fifty thousand.
Three employees.
We could get, we could get four employees.
But that doesn't, that doesn't include the CDL driver, so you have to have that too, because we already took that out.
We already took that out.
Yeah.
So, we'd have five?
Probably five, four to five.
That would increase our workforce by eight, two, three percent.
How much road?
These numbers.
Streets, streets.
Well, it, you know, depend, now, four to five, it depends on where you put them because, you know, one officer, one PD officer, there's two guys in parks or streets or, I mean, it depends on where you put them, on which ones they are. I mean, that's, that makes a big difference.
I think we're giving you the PD officer and compliance officer.
Yeah.
And then-
So, there's three, that's-
That, that, that equipment operator.
CDL.
Well, the CDL, according to the figures here, it probably comes out to about thirty-seven-thousand.
CDL compliance?
CDL compliance and an officer. Very good. And then the rest in roads.
Really?
Well, they already have the equipment out.
Do we got the equipment out? Fifty thousand?
Yeah, that less, four hundred thousand. So, CDL compliance officer and officer and the rest in roads.
In roads?
Well, streets.
Streets. You're talking about, you're talking about the private crew, right? You're talking about like mowing and-
No, we're talking about-
They fix the world.
Fixing the streets.
Hey, but what do you put there? Again, we'll go back to that. We don't have any equipment.
No, 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 the contracting.
I've seen the guys, I've seen the guys with the truck and shovel and, and compact and you build a, that compactor. And those posts don't come up to the range.
So, we, we used to do that, we quit doing it because the council asked us to quit doing it because every time it rained, they were gone. And it was wasted, we were wasting all that material we put in them. Because if you don't cut it and you don't oil it, as soon as it gets wet, it comes back happening. And so, we quit doing that because the council didn't want us to do that anymore. Now, if we want to go back to doing that, we can ride that truck around all the time for the whole.
I think, I think what we're talking about is-
Do your best that you can.
We're talking about the-
CDL.
Yeah.
One patrol and one compliance officer, and that's it as far as employees.
Oh, and they said more street work.
No, 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 we did not say that. So, you just, we, we, we were talking about the mom and pop.
Okay, a mom and pop operation and get out, you know, come down here, do as much as they can.
They're going to shoot them. Give them a house, a little move down there.
Well, it's on, it's on record too.
For the work.
Okay.
Get, get, get some people from up north, you know, winter up there.
Hold their RV, hold their lay down machine down here behind the RV.
So, we, so we got a good number?
Yes.
What is it?
Okay, so that's, so that's a total of three employees.
The CDL driver, the compliance officer and the police officer. Okay?
Me.
And the rest, the mom and pop. Deal.
Two.
Yeah, police officer, compliance officer, CDL driver, deal.
Do we have anybody that can operate the region?
We have one CDL.
Maybe he's test.
No.
No?
No, I mean, we, we have employees that, that want to go do a CDL. That goes back to what we talked about during the budget though. You paid for them to get it, then you paid for them to have everybody do it and then they-
But all it is is a class B, isn't it?
Yeah, all it is is a class B. That's the other thing. And we have, we have employees and we told them we would do the class B, but they wanted us to do the class A. And we did the class A. So, it's like, and we're trying to work out a deal with the school right now because the school has their school bus training deal, that's class B. If we can just get our employees through to, to let us send them to their training deal that's at the school, they have all the class Bs, we, we could get them all class Bs.
Cool.
And everybody can drive that thing. We'll give Brandon a class B, she can drive a lot.
So, I have a question. You were saying that y'all get them trained and they leave the school, like if they apply this additional training, they put a retention on it, like y'all going to do that?
Well, that's what, that's what we started doing with all our training contracts is if they leave, they have to pay us back. So, that is one thing we've done. But we don't need anybody to do the class A. We don't have anything that requires a class A. So, there's no reason for the city to pay for a class A. We won't do it for a class B, no problem, without the class A.
It's also, it's also structured under pay, pre-scale.
Take your payback.
It's an incentive for them as well, isn't it?
Sure, oh, yeah. It'll be an incentive.
So, the numbers are fifty thousand for equipment, three hundred and forty-two thousand for roads and ninety-four thousand for staff?
That wasn't the fact.
Ninety-four thousand.
I think them thereabouts are.
I mean, your thirty thousand, sure enough.
It's going to be fifty, thirty-seven.
Staff as well.
And-
We have that hundred and twenty for staff.
Okay, hundred and thirty-one.
Okay, and the, and the rest?
Forty-two, fifty.
That, what'd you get?
Hundred and thirty-one. One thirty-one?
Minus four hundred thousand is-
No, oh, yeah, and then fifty?
No, the fifty's already taken out for those.
CDL three to one.
Fifty-three.
Oh.
Fifty-two.